... For orders, please. Pleasure.
The United States of America and to all the provisions that has a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Beautiful day, we have a full house. A lot going on, we certainly do. Okay, can we do a roll call, please?
President Everett.
Yes.
Vice President Wazore.
Here.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
From.
Secretary Zeller.
Uh, here.
Tiff Brady.
Here.
Tiff Lady.
Here.
Tiff Zerkinet.
Norman, would you, in your conservation ethic for us, please?
Yes. Conservation ethic, goal number six. To foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us, regardless of the basis of our interest in nature. To develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. The conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal number one. To preserve native plants and animals, geological features, and natural ecosystems that are threatened or endangered in McHenry County, and to reclaim such ecosystems that have been degraded for the benefit of present and future generations and for their own sake.
Thank you very much. John, Conservation Stewardship flag show.
Uh, stewardship flag. We try to make a difference by standing up for water or wildlife, way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy, sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully develop cities and towns, strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, govern, and recreate. We will protect and restore wetlands, streams, rivers, which help to reduce flood.
Very much. Heather?
Our land acknowledgement statement to many indigenous groups and tribal nations, including the Ho-Chung, Ikaku, Coda-Dakota, Sputen, Miami, Eoria, Potawatomi, Sauk, and Meskwaki. McHenry County is part of their traditional homeland. We invite you to join us in offering respect to the indigenous peoples living here today and their ancestor stewardship of the land. Together, we celebrate these special places, seek to learn and honor the history of those who came before us, and strive to forge meaningful relationships with indigenous communities to deepen our collective connection to the land.
Thank you very much. All right. Anybody set a chance to look at the agenda? Motion to adopt the agenda?
I would.
Director. Bonnie, Secretary Kuran?
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Zeller.
Yeah, Tiff Brady.
Yes.
Tiff Lady?
Yes.
Vice President Wazore.
Yes.
President Everett.
Yes.
Right. And now, a very special event. Uh, it's my absolute pleasure to present, first I'm going to read our situation uh, that occurred on Monday, June twenty-third, three twenty-five, at ten oh one AM. McHenry County Sheriff's Department dispatch sent or broadcasted an emergency call for service. A traffic crash on Route fourteen west of Bunker Hill Road involving a passenger vehicle and a semi-tractor trailer combination. One vehicle was described as over, driver was trapped then. Chief Ryan Stewart, hearing the dispatch while I broke out, immediately advised dispatch he would respond. Arriving one minute later, ten oh two, Chief Stewart confirmed the passenger vehicle had come to rest on its roof and that one injured person was still inside. Chief Stewart relayed information to dispatch for responding police and fire units, established rapport with the injured person, and reassured him more help was on the way. Recognizing the person was hemorrhaging heavily from an arm injury, Chief Stewart, without hesitation, cleared debris from the immediate area, crawled inside the overturned vehicle. And at approximately ten oh five AM, properly applied a tourniquet, successfully controlled the wound. Chief Stewart continued to encourage the victim to engage in conversation and provided repeated reassurance to him till units from Harvard Fire Rescue arrived at ten oh eight. They took over patient care and began the process of extrication, which was completed at ten thirty-eight, a full thirty-three minutes after Chief Stewart had applied the tourniquet. It was later confirmed that the injured driver had suffered an arterial bleed amongst other injuries, and that the quick application of a tourniquet by Chief Stewart was instrumental in saving the man's life. So. Please, a round of applause for Chief.
Thank you. I appreciate. I appreciate this, um, just doing my job, really. Um, these guys, any one of them would have done the exact same thing, I know it, for uh, have the equipment, the training to do so, so. I was just at a time and place, um. So.
So, close to the occasion, and no question your training was a part of it, but it's you. It's seen here, I appreciate that. Well, we have a certificate for you, and a very nice medal.
We both are proud of you.
Thanks again. Thank you.
And if I may, for a second, um, we just wanted to extend our appreciation for our leader, because here's the deal, right? Administrators in law enforcement, a lot of times, can be plainclothes, kind of behind the scenes, you know, doing all the, the desk work, and this is a guy that has worked the streets with me from beginning of my career. And he's willing to step up, you know, at any given moment, at any time, even though he's gotten the highest rank in this department, is handling all the administrative stuff. He still handles all the patrol stuff like he did with the same passion the very first day he took the oath of this job. And uh, we love him as a leader, so I just wanted to extend it on behalf of our, the guys.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a comment about?
Yeah, well, I was gonna do it, but yeah, I'll, I'll go right now. Um. Yeah, I mean, it's just, apart from the course, this is just such a good team. Um, I don't know, many of you may not know, we had another very serious situation that occurred, uh, quite recently. Um, and in that case, the, the the outcome was not nearly as, uh, successful, but not, not through any fault of our officer. Our officer intervened, um, and helped save two young little girls. Uh, so more on that later, I'll get into a lot of details on it, but I'm just saying, it's just, it's indicative of this entire department of, you know, not only the quality of their work, but the value to the district and, and to the, to the county, so. Thank you to the entire force.
Very professional team.
Thank you. All right. And, let's see. Staying on that, we're gonna talk about newly promoted team members.
That's easy to follow. That is, that is, Brian. All deserves. Um. We have, even Dylan, come up beside me real quick. Thank you for allowing me to introduce a couple, uh, not new team members, but new to their positions. Um, I just wanted to start off tonight by giving a few statistics about, um, our operations department and, um, why I'm so proud of this department and why I am so proud of the district. And I think we all should be proud of the efforts that the board and the staff, um, support in bringing along our employees, um, through succession planning and professional development, um, to prepare them for the next steps in their careers. And these two gentlemen standing next to me are, are prime examples of that. Share some quick statistics with you. The operations department has twenty full-time staff. Um, nine of them are former seasonals, that served off as seasonals, so does, um. We have seven ranger staff, um, myself as a manager, and Steve now as a supervisor, all, all in that group of nine, started off as, as seasonals. Um, so it's more than fifty percent of our, our ranger staff started as seasonal, so I think that's pretty impressive. We have four other people in our department, um, that have, have, uh, received promotions within the department, um, so a total of thirteen of our twenty, or sixty-five percent are basically homegrown and voted and, and backed by the district. Um, like I said, the professional development, succession plan to progress in the career, so I think, I think that's a testament to what the district does as a whole, um, or staff. So, just started off with that real quick. Um, I'll first speak about Steve. Uh, Steve Stavina, um, is our new Parks and Fleet Supervisor. Uh, Steve started as a seasonal, as mentioned, um, back in two thousand and five, so twenty years ago. Um, he progressed and was hired as an assistant ranger, um, in Region Six under Mary DJ, um, and then transferred over to Region Four and worked under Dave Beckhill for a period of time. Finally transferred to Region One and worked under Tom Bastin, um, as an assistant. So, three different, uh, rangers he worked under through that course of time, uh, learning all sorts of different things from each one that, that he carried on to, to create his own, um, way of doing things. Um, also experienced in three different regions, so just a wealth of experience through that time. Uh, and then, uh, after Tom retired in, in Region One, uh, Steve got promoted to Ranger Two finally, and has served in that capacity for ten years. Um, has done a great job in Region One during that time. Um, he's also served as a union steward for fifteen years, which again goes into that leadership kind of category, um, and you know, developed a rapport and, and a respect from fellow ranger staff um, in that capacity, and, and now continues that as the, uh, as the person fleet supervisor. So, um, very proud of Steve. Um, he's continuing on and has, as he has been with his professional development. He and I are attending an RPA school, which I think, hopefully, um, this winter. Um, so we'll continue to bring him along, and, uh, I'm, I'm, he's been doing a great job in the last month he's been on board. So, really, really proud of Steve and really happy to introduce him to the board as a Parks and Fleet Supervisor. So, with, uh, with Steve's promotion that left a vacancy as the Ranger Two in Region One, um, here we have Dylan Reiman. So, uh, Dylan's also started as a seasonal with us, um, in two thousand and fifteen, uh, ten years ago. Then, uh, he worked under Mary DJ in Region Six. Uh, he then, uh, was hired on as an assistant ranger with Kurt Kleiner, Region Five. And then eventually he's transferred up to Region One with Steve Stavina. So, much similar, similar path, different, uh, rangers as mentors along the way and experience in multiple different, um, regions. All goes to, you know, where he's served as, performed as a Ranger Two in Region One. Um, and so, just super proud, proud of Dylan as well. Resting ten years, it was, we went through the, uh, interview process and it was pretty evident that Dylan was the guy, all, all internal interviews, Dylan stood out, so. Um, again, super proud of Dylan and, uh, happy to have him our new Ranger Two in Region One.
Bring in the new officer.
You know, come on up. Um, before we get into the official, uh, oath of office here, I just wanted to mention, I know I introduced you all to Sam, uh, two board meetings back, but we got to mention he was also serving at, you know, not just patrol at, uh, Niles, but he was also an investigator there. So he brings those tools to our team. Just the other day on that critical incident, I carried, put on his investigator hat, so we're getting that, that side of it, so. Gonna lean on him a little bit more, that area. Don't have investigators, our guys all good. Um. Good ourselves, having somebody with that experience, it's just awesome, so. Sure. Right. Now, um, again, this is our official oath of office. Uh, raise your right hand. Right.
Hi, Senator.
Laura. Having been appointed as police officer for the Henry County Conservation District, the county of Henry, for that. I've been appointed as a police officer for the Henry County Conservation District, the county of Henry, of Orsa. solemnly swear. Solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the state of Illinois. Constitution of the state of Illinois. I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of police officer to the best of my ability. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now, let's talk about the two thousand and forty Comprehensive Conservation Plan. Presentation. Welcome forth, leave.
Thank you, have a good evening. Bye.
Hi, everyone, thank you. Well, Star Wars. Yeah.
All right, John, all yours. Uh, let's see, last week, uh, I teed this up that we would be inviting Michelle from Upland Design to come in and talk with you, and I don't know if she's had a chance to meet. I know she met some of you early on, uh, she's got a short presentation for us, and I'm gonna turn that over to her, so. Welcome, Michelle.
Thanks for having me. Um, very excited about this project, as well as the whole team. So, I'm gonna give you an introduction, um, a little bit to the team, so you know who's really behind me, doing all the work, and then, um, just walk through like this, the steps of your process. I won't go into too much detail, because you don't want to hear me for an hour and a half, um, but it'll be a nice primer on how we expect to get this big project, um, done. That's the overview. Thanks. Great. Um, I just want to start with this, this, these pieces that you have created to guide this agency. Um, we keep those in the forefront of the project throughout. We understand these are your guiding principles and, um, that we'll be using these as we move forward and look at the entire agency and, of course, um, all of your sites. Um, these are the things that will guide the recommendations. Man, thank you, I apologize. Yes, economy, change. Here we go. Thank you. All right, so here is the, here's the whole team, so if I walk over. Okay, so the top line is our, um, Upland Design team, um, and then, um, I will talk a little, I'll talk a little bit more about them, but, um, that I'm your, kind of be your principal in charge and are, um, along with me, Liz and Maria, these two, um, will be helping guiding, um, the comprehensive plan, uh, this will be do a little bit more. And then Keith will be doing quality control, and Dusy is our landscape designer too, and, um, she ends up, uh, a lot of meetings, putting a lot of documents together, and really be project support. Um, she's done this on a lot of comp plans, um, with us, and does a great job. Um, and then Acuity is gonna be doing our community-wide, um, survey and analysis. Engineering Resource Associates with Aaron, Ken, and Marty, they will be doing, um, uh, they're civil engineers and, um, environmental engineers, as well as GIS specialists. Um, and then Venture Consulting Enterprises, Christian, he is, um, he's doing some of the feasibility and benchmarking, and he's really an economist. He likes numbers. Um, and then finally, Dewberry is our building analysis and recommendations of Jennifer and Jeff. And so that's kind of the, the big team, the people that are, um, that be, um, carrying the load throughout this process. I'm gonna talk a little bit about each firm, if you can, I'll head to the next one. Um, so, Upland Design, uh, we are a landscape architecture and park planning firm, we're twenty-seven years old, and, um, we work with a lot of, um, forest preserves, as well as the McHenry County Conservation District, and, um, our very first client was Campbell County Forest Preserve, and they're still our client today. So, these kind of agencies are very, uh, close to our heart. Um, next slide. And then also, we do, um, quite a bit of comprehensive master planning, so these are some of the recent ones we have worked on. And then also, um, with the Illinois Tollway, um, we worked with them to plant sixty-four thousand trees throughout the tollways, so really, um, very large, looking at very large land areas, very linear in the tollways, but also really trying to understand, you know, how the, those, uh, little ecosystems are working so that we could plant trees successfully. And then, um, also with IDOT, um, we worked with them a number of years, uh, again, on looking at, um, their, all their sides of the roads, mapping, doing GIS, helping them do a better job managing those spaces, so. Great, next. Dewberry's our architects, and, um, they are, um, they are a natural firm. Our team is right here in Chicago, um, and Jeff, um, I've worked on a number of projects with, he's, uh, super passionate and, um, especially when I started talking to him about, about this project and being on this team and, and talking about sustainability and, and looking to this vision of many years away, he got very excited. So, I, they're, they're thrilled to be, um, a part of this project. And then Engineering Resource Associates, um, this is a team that, um, doesn't often get to do comp plans. They do a lot of work with us on outdoor, um, public spaces, um, access and creating, um, the civil engineering side of it, but, um, for them, they are really excited because their ecology and GIS side is really gonna be able to come alive and really help map and understand all of the sorts. Next. Great, and Acuity, you've worked with before, so you don't need a super introduction, but, um, they do a wonderful job, um, with coming wide surveys, understanding how those metrics play out, and then helping us get real answers to move towards recommendations. And you can see they've worked with, um, lots of, um, forest preserves, as well as, as you all, I think, uh, in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and one. Um, and then Christian, um, Veterans, I said, he's an economist, he likes numbers. Um, one of the neat projects that, um, Chris got to work on was looking at, well, county, um, and their forest reserves and the natural areas benefit assessment. And so this was looking at non-economic, um, benefits, but then also trying to understand what are, how do those tie in? And this actually was, um, charts that they, that they worked on for that, you know, looking at all these different things that open space, when it's preserved and it's maintained and good, um, eco-types and habitats, what that does as a benefit. So, we're super excited to have him as well. So this is, um, the project approach, lots of good steps. Um, I'm gonna walk you through this just a little bit, you can stop me if you have a question. And, right, with, uh, with being stopped, um, but I won't, will not read all of the slides, because it's a lot. Okay, thanks. So, the first is an overview, is just, um, the initiation and the management. And so, um, we'll be doing a great kickoff and running communication and check-ins throughout the process. But this is an early timeline. We are, we are starting in October and finishing, um, of this year, and then finishing in February of two thousand and twenty-seven. So it's a, it's a long process, um, and we think that will really help us be able to be thorough, have time to think and make really great recommendations. Um, and then, and you can see, this is all of our process, our different, um, phases, and there's a lot of overlap between these things. So we are starting, starting one and, and starting to go, and then we kind of pull in the next one, but we're still working on this one. And that really lets some of the overlap happen that we see as a benefit to the process.
Quick question, and where are the touchpoints with the Board of Directors? What are the milestones? Do you check in with the Board of Directors at each step, or is that in the management?
It's not quite each step, but, um, we like to, we like to have an early, an early, um, check-in, where we're kind of talking about process and what you all think, and then early visioning. And then after there's a, um, all the community input is in, before we start recommendations, then we have another step in so that you can hear, how did that community survey and the results of it go? And also give feedback. And then we come back again during the visioning and strategic planning phase and, and have a, a full meeting with you, so you've, hopefully at that point, have time to let us put all the information we have together, at least some of it, and, um, start visioning how, what this recommendation is.
All right, I think that's a really good point, and I would look for, John, I think, on, at least on a monthly basis, or if we're in between any kind of, or back from your group, that we get, uh, feel from you, kind of, here's where we are each, each meeting.
I, I believe the way they designed it was, um, check-ins with SAP initially every couple of weeks, and then once we got moving and rolling, it went to monthly, uh, after that. So that was kind of how that one was designed. I think each, each of the different firms had a different approach, but I do believe that's how you guys did it.
Yeah, exactly. Clearly, we can do a monthly as affordable as possible.
I'm just saying, just have it on the agenda, you know, or any kind of update. Right.
Um, so task two, inventory and resource management, is the biggest task as far as, um, amount of, of lifting. And so there's, um, the inventory part is, we'll get to go to every one of your buildings, every public access point, um, we're going to look at, and, um, do a ranking. We use a, a four, um, four-piece ranking, and so they're either, you know, in excellent or in good shape, or they're in fair or poor shape, and fair and poor really helps us know what might need to have some more attention, among other, lots of other, uh, criteria as well. And then we'll look, um, deeply into, um, your programming, your outreach, your engagement, and the economics, um, as well as benchmarking with other agencies. Why?
But what about areas that are not currently accessible?
So, they're kind of, uh, the biggest way we'll be able to look at those is with GIS mapping, is using some of that to do identifying, but also we'll be talking with your staff additionally to kind of understand, you know, what are they seeing? What are the issues? So that will kind of give us a, a big picture of, speaking of that on this.
So Fox, look, is that?
So that would be a property that we don't, we have a master plan, but it hasn't been. So is all the public comments staff start to identify areas that are opportunity areas? I think that'll be woven in and through this process prioritized, right? Of, I mean, that's the end goal.
Well, yeah, and some of them, some of them you might not want to have public access, right? That's, that will actually be in the goals. All others, it's like, yes, we really want to make sure that public access happens, so that. Um, and so, I think that fits really well. So here's, uh, the other pieces, um, to it, um, looking at, um, overall, some of the agric- tourism nature and ecotourism, all those things kind of, um, you know, blend together, um, but looking at those as well as operational functions, finances, market values, and, uh, the non-market values, that's the work that Chris will be doing. Um. So, this really gets us to know, um, the agency extremely well. And as I said, two and three, three is our outreach with the public, um, really overlap a little bit. So, um, so we go into the stakeholder and the public engagement, which, um, will have open houses, probably some pop-ups, we'll have stakeholder meetings, and then, of course, community-wide survey, which will be statistically valid and will hit the entire county. And then, even if one area doesn't answer as much as another, because they will use computer program to balance it all, to make sure you get a really valid, uh, survey at the end. And that's when they'll come, they actually, the people that do that, they will come and present to you all. So you can ask the, the statisticians the, uh, the hard questions.
So it's gonna be till ninety-five, ninety-third, uh, afternoon slot?
I would expect so.
Yeah, that's what it's at.
Yeah.
So, can you spend the community survey, would it be more, you know, just the open houses and like events? Or are you gonna do like mailers and?
Actually, there'll be a mailer, right? Yeah, and so, um, there's a, a balance between, uh, mailing out a paper survey, and then some people just get postcards, so there's a little bit of both. Anybody, though, that, um, is selected, their household is selected, is a random sample. Anyone who gets that can actually get a paper survey, they can do an online survey, or they can get a call. So if they don't want to fill anything out or can't, then they can, they can sign up for a call. And, uh, someone will take their answers down, so. We tend to, if they, let's think, we're just not getting a lot of, of the surveys back, then they will send a postcard reminder out to get more. Yeah. I understand the last survey that you all did with Acuity, it, we had a lot of, a lot of people giving input. I, I, I have a feeling this will not be a problem. All right, so that's it, any other questions on stakeholder part? All right, so, um, this is lead assessment and benchmarking. You really start some of that benchmarking in, um, in Phase Two, and then, um, we pull all those things together so that it's, you know, really readable, understandable information before we move into recommendation. So that's what work is all about. I didn't mention, on the bottom. This is, this is the part, team members that are working on each phase. And trying to keep that organized, I forgot to mention it there. All right, next, um. Uh, so this is vision, the visioning part is when, um, we will be back with you all and, um, to talk about what the vision is. We'll be, um, part of that, we'll be feeding information into that visioning session so that you really can understand what we're seeing and that what we're hearing. that you really can understand what we're seeing and that what we're hearing and what, how you benchmark, you know, across other agencies. So this will be a, a fun part of the, the process. And then we'll have a summary on that so that y'all can see that and make sure, yeah, we hit the right notes and this is what you all were thinking too. And then we develop the plan and the recommendations. So we start pulling those things together. There are so many different pieces, but everything that we were reviewing is turning into recommendations. And then in this part of the process, we like to think of it as a back and forth with district. So we hear and see things, come up with recommendations, and sometimes that's just not quite the right mark. And that's how we like to go back and forth to make sure that we're hearing all the things that maybe are underlying and aren't, aren't visible initially. And that way, once the plan is done, that it's a plan that you all think is the right plan to implement. So funding and implementation, I'll be honest, I'm already thinking about funding and implementation. John and I had a good discussion recently just about, you know, where you at in funding and the exciting proposition being passed. And I, so this is part we'll be thinking about early on, but then we'll really sit down and formalize it during this, this section. And finally, um, next one is our final deliverables. But we have planned a presentation to the board in draft format for you all. I'm sure you'll have some good time to look at that first. And then another meeting where you actually have the opportunity to adopt it. So there'll be a, one more time to look at it and make sure that we can maybe just see it. So that'd be fine.
Great. Well, thank you, Michelle. And just want to give a shout out too, to all the folks who were involved in the selection process. It's seven teams. We had John Kramer, Ledden, Smith, Dave Powers, Edlin Martin, the recorder, John Flavell, Amy Peters, Bonnie Leegy, and Alicia Livingston. Thank you all for the work that you did to sort through and, and make fine selections. So high hopes.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Great expectations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a reminder tonight, what we're doing is we're seeking, I think it's consensus. There is a motion, is that correct?
Correct. It's just a continuing to negotiations.
Yeah. Basically what we're looking for is authorization for the staff to move forward with negotiations with them and get these things finalized. And with any luck, we'll have it back to, to inform you at the September board for a, a contract and approval.
Any objections proceeding? Sorry, none. All right. Thank you, folks. All right. Trustees report. Have anything to report?
A C O D meeting. It was the perfect C O D meeting to introduce Heather to the members. Because it was casual, there was no, I always think they should have a presentation. They didn't have a presentation. It was very casual and everybody had time to talk. She met several county board members in conversation. My feeler, she met, I don't think I remember down, Carolyn Goldfield. And she had her party with her as well, Rick Mack. We were at his table, so she had the opportunity to talk to him. And Lisa Headline of Land Conservancy. And I know there were a few more, but I just remembered.
I have their names written down somewhere, but not.
What was her name? It's just one of them.
John. Well, it was, I, if you're going to induce a board member to, our board member to others for the C O D meeting, that was the perfect one, where everything started way back.
It was fun.
You've been?
Yeah.
You've been to C O D?
Yeah.
Oh, you have? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was fun. Thank you, Bonnie, for showing me around. It was very welcoming. It was a social, lively bunch.
Fun to watch Elizabeth work the ground.
I believe it though. Bonnie did great.
Uh, thank you, Bonnie. Anything else?
No.
You're my own.
I would just add off of that, thank you all for the welcome and to Elizabeth and Christie and everyone for the great onboarding. It's been a great experience coming onto the board so far and excited to keep learning some more. So thank you all for the warm welcomes.
What's for Paul? All right. Paul is not here today, so let's give that president's report. I have just a few things. One, you know, there used to be pretty good farmer representation on the, on the board and we don't have right at the current board, but we want the farmers to know that they are almost in our minds. In the result of this, today's Wall Street Journal. And I think it's the only, you know, it's the only occupation where this is, this can happen. You do everything right and what happens? You get a bumper crop. And farming is the only one. And what happens when you get a bumper crop? Prices go down. It's just, it's counterintuitive, but you know, huge corn crop won't help cash that farmers. And literally, here's the, the production of corn, record level, which means the price is going to drop down. So Andy, we saw Andy's presentation on Thursday, what, was it nine percent is Andy from the, from the corn? Yeah, I can't remember which percentage. It was one of the faces you had on the.
From the corn only?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know what it was, corn or.
Anyway, you know, I know that's a part of your forecast in terms of the budget, but anyway, that, you know, bumper crop means prices are down for farmers. Only one, you do everything right and moves. Also, happy to report that I have some seeds. These are the Conservation District, McHenry County Conservation District, natural seeds, you know, flora from, from the prairies that we find here. So these are for you. So I'm going to leave them up here at the end of the meeting. Come on up and help yourself and plant and grow.
Thank you.
So I have. Next, other comments?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Oh, I agree. Thank you. So with that, we'll begin some agenda.
Okay, here's what I have.
All right. I already, I missed your stage, Nora.
Thirteen point oh, for this consent agenda. Thirteen point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings. Thirteen point one A, July seventeenth, twenty twenty five, video of the whole. Thirteen point one B, July twenty first, twenty twenty five, regular meeting. Thirteen point two A, acceptance of treasurer's report for July February one, twenty twenty five, as presented. Thirteen point three, authorization to change the Board of Trustees Committee of the Whole meeting previously scheduled for Tuesday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty five, to Tuesday, September eleventh, twenty twenty five. Thirteen point four, resolution number twenty five dash six five, authorizing the payment to the McHenry County Collector and McHenry County Treasurer for the twenty twenty four second installment of property taxes for a total cost not to exceed ninety-two thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty cents. Thirteen point five, authorization to repair specifications and let bids for native seeds for standard mixes and countywide seeding budgets. Thirteen point six, resolution number twenty five dash six six, approving the adjustment to the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six seasonal closure procedures and public messaging to reflect that seasonal sites will be closed annually from December one through April one, eliminating the two-inch snowfall rule and the practice of reopening sites during periods of mild weather. Thirteen point seven, resolution number twenty five dash six seven, awarding the RFP and authorizing the executive director to execute a ten-year conservation grazing lease agreement for rotational cattle grazing on the forty-eight point five acre K L P deck one oh nine five six parcel to Ramon Vernal Perez and Jessica Rodart. Thirteen point eight, authorization to bid electrical services for fifteen district sites for a one-year term beginning November first, twenty twenty five, at a monthly index price of to be determined per kilowatt hour through Midwest Energy, Inc., and authorize the executive directors to execute the resulting contract. The executed contract will be presented to the Board of Trustees at its next regularly scheduled board meeting for revocation. Thirteen point nine, resolution number twenty five dash six eight, authorizing a contract to Carmichael Construction of Oringo, Illinois, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the residing of the Regent One Shop in Glacial Park for a cost not to exceed eighty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars. Thirteen point ten, resolution number twenty five dash six nine, awarding a contract to Suburban Propane of Crystal Lake, Illinois, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the purchase of propane fuel at a cost not to exceed a dollar point two seven nine per gallon for one year, starting September one, twenty twenty five, and ending August thirty-one, twenty twenty six. Thirteen point eleven, resolution number twenty five dash seventy, awarding a contract to Conserve F Farm Service of Woodstock, Illinois, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the unleaded and diesel fuels at plus twenty-five cents per gallon over market price the day the fuel is delivered for six months, starting September one, twenty twenty four, and ending February twenty eighth, twenty twenty six.
Let me, there's a correction. I can't. Twenty-five. There, okay. So.
Okay. So starting September one, twenty twenty five, and ending February twenty eighth, twenty twenty six. Thirteen point two, resolution number twenty five dash seven one, ratifying the Conservation District's participation in the McHenry County Conservation Foundation's grant application to Enbridge and T C Energy for purchasing native seed. Thirteen point thirteen, resolution number twenty five dash seventy-two, authorizing the executive director to execute the water quality trading program agreement with the Northern Marine Wastewater Reclamation District for phosphorus reduction in the Fox watershed as presented. Thirteen point fourteen, resolution number twenty five seventy-three, authorizing the submission of a full proposal for a land acquisition grant for the Bigfoot Woods Oak Legacy Project to the Prairie State Conservation Coalition and the associated collaboration with the McHenry County Conservation Foundation staff on that initiative. Thirteen point fifteen, resolution number twenty five dash seven four, authorizing travel expenditures for the twenty twenty six National Recreation and Park Associations, Park and Recreation Maintenance Management School at Old Bay National Training Center in Wheeling, West Virginia, on January twenty fifth through the thirtieth, twenty twenty six, for Park and Food Supervisor Steve Stet Sabanow for year one and Operations Manager Ben O'Day for year two, their cost not to exceed four thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Resolution number twenty five dash seven five, authorizing the conversion of the Accounting Assistant One position from part-time to full-time, effective for the current fiscal year twenty twenty six. Thirteen seventeen, resolution number twenty five dash seven six, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement, I G A, with a village dairy for temporary storage by tree and shrub storm debris.
I'll make my motion.
Thank you.
Well, second.
Good subject to the correction. It's just a script is here, so yes, to correction.
I think we might need one other question. Thirteen three, it's prob, it's minor, but I think that should be Thursday, not Tuesday in both spots, right? Is that a Thursday?
Correct. Those are Thursday dates. Yes. Okay. That's, that's.
Okay, so approved with amendment? Yeah. Moved with amendments, seconded with amendments? Yeah, amendment for thirteen three. Dates, whose data proves it. Excellent. What call?
Okay. Stevie. Leslie Leegy.
Yes.
Vice President Wazore.
Yes.
President Zimmerman.
Yes.
Percy Brady.
Yes.
Secretary Zeller.
Yes.
President Everard.
Yes.
All right. John, approval bill.
Yeah. Fourteen one A, Treasurers' Internal Audit. I just requested some information on just two items that came on July twenty twenty five, available. First item is invoice number two eight zero nine five four for Midland Standard Engineering, amounts of two thousand two hundred point three dollars. The only reason I just questioned that was because the invoice date was dated twenty twenty four. I'm assuming it's just probably a long-term project, but just look for an explanation because that's almost a year of probably invoice date to pay. Next item was invoice L F F one three eight and L F F five four, that's to Lakefront Fiber LLC, for Brookdale Internet at five hundred dollars in July, for August, Brookdale Internet at five hundred dollars in July, Brookdale Internet at five hundred dollars. I was just curious as to any extra costs involved in that, or is that actually the full cost of internet or just that, so they get five hundred? Well, we will get that back in requests before next meeting. Fourteen one B, I make a motion to approve the bills, payment of bills as indicated on submission of bills pending report for a month ending July first, twenty twenty five. I get a second.
Moved by Sean.
Second.
Seconded by Bonnie.
Secretary Zeller. Yes. Vice President Wazore.
Yes.
Percy Brady.
Yes.
Percy Leegy.
Yes.
President Zimmerman.
Yes.
And President Everard.
Yes.
Executive Director's report.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you. I know great recognition of our law enforcement team tonight. I think it's spectacular and great to be able to celebrate them as well as a lot of promotions from within with the succession planning that you're seeing. And again, it's been musical cheers for sure as, as we pull up and around. But again, we still have a very dynamic and great team and it's been great to be able to see their skills kind of move forward. So that's, that's really exciting to see them sparkle on their new goals. The, I talked about landscapes is out and so a lot of great programs, great outdoor beer trailers up and coming, so that will be in September, Labor Day weekend. So we are, offices are closed next Monday at. The other area that we've got afterwards, we added another meeting date on September ninth, and so you all have your meal plans to get back to Christie with the foundation. And that'll be awesome. That'll be a pleasant valley conservation area. So four fifteen, be able to come see the bison if you have not seen them. We'll have some refreshments and we'll come back over to the pavilion and we'll have dinner. And then the Blue Farm that did the retreat on August second will be with us and has all the materials that it's put into some organization with some visioning next steps for conversation. The executive team will be there. Sean and I did meet with Kevin and kind of looked at the roadmap. And so they will also be proposing to bring your calendars. But we're looking at with the momentum and the excitement, the need to have additional meetings with both boards to follow, probably early October. So either probably doing a four hours sometime during a weekday time towards evening. And then I know October's really busy with events, but it's maybe a weekend, but we wanted to do them kind of within a close, then like twelve days from one another, not to get too far out of our, while things are fresh and we're building all of that. So some more information to be coming on that. And of course, the foundation will be considering for his services, although at a discounted rate, to see if they'll entertain his continuation to kind of leave station self, the foundation board. Hopefully discuss on that. And that's all I have. It's just, it's great to see this project moving forward for the forward to twenty forty plan. It's really big. There's a lot of things happening. Also, we are doing, you know, next, tomorrow night, historic meeting with McHenry Home. Tonight, Caitlin and Shawna are both at the county. The Historic Preservation Mission has held these quarterly meetings. This is their second meeting that they're holding, all the historical. So they're there to see what's going on at the same time as this, and they have landmarks in Illinois talking about grants. So they're there looking at that information. So all I have, but thank you for, we have Elise here from the foundation and see, I thought I saw somebody online too. Oh, I think Wendy.
Great, thank you. Public comments. Other comments?
I'm not, I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Great. Do you want to give a shout out to Lori Ryan? She's the plant ecologist. I think she's the one to put the seeds together for us and that is it's ours. No, but you.
Yeah, we ordered those custom seed packets that Lori advised us on native seeds to choose their custom pack. So we definitely, Lori helps us compile them.
Okay, great, great. And Lori, just, I. And Lori, just I had request for her, I sent, actually sent the request to Gabe, he forwarded on to her. Uh, we have a constituent that contacted me whose property adjoins one of our, one of the conservation district sites. And he has cleared invasive species out of his property and wanted to know what would be compatible, which he put back on his property that would be compatible to the district, so that was really nice. So Lori put together a very thorough list of here are the plants that he should consider in terms of shrubs and everything, and, and she included flower packets as well. So there was a great response, so please, I thank her an email, but if you would pass on, pass on my gratitude as well, I appreciate.
And I will say, um, announcement that Lori Ryan also serves on the Chicago Wilderness Alliance, the accreditation team for the Excellence in Ecological Restoration Program. So the staff submitted, um, one of our sites, High Point, uh, for accreditation this year. It will be receiving platinum distinction. Um, so the commissioners go out to various sites and you don't, you know, she sits and leads the group. There are other commissioners that represent other organizations that are part of the alliance. So you're not, you know, scoring, um, our own property, it's been other bi-ecologic, ecological, uh, specialists in the area. So that will be occurring on October twenty-second. And then also there'll be some other boardees as part of that. So if the board is interested in attending, I know there will be limited seating available. It's free, but with our meeting, but we also submitted George Johnson, who is also, again, was part of the gift and holding the parcel at High Point. He was nominated for a force of nature, he will be receiving that. And then we did submit the vote yes committee that helped us get our proposition and they also. So there's a lot to celebrate. And then understanding this front attack as well, will be receiving the, so a lot to celebrate. Right, I think about Lori, because I told her in conversation that when Dale Schreiber was saying Lori did this, and Lori this, and Lori that, both of you didn't know who Lori was. So she says she would be very happy to, um, show the board the seating building, I guess, or is the process to see how she goes through the thing.
Great. I think, I think I've met her, did she come to the board? When we went with the county board, went out, there was an ecologist there because I was talking to her about the, the census that she had done on the flora. Because she's worked on, is she the one working on the white paper for the, the increase of species in both plants and animals, or the bison arm? Is that her?
Brenna, that was Brenna.
Okay, then I have.
You have. You guys need to move.
I would like.
Oh, is that still by Pleasant Valley?
Next to Pleasant Valley. We toured it, I think it was before you joined the board. But we could see it when we're at Pleasant Valley.
But you were like.
Then we could see it, yeah.
Well, I don't know.
I saw that.
Exact building that she wants to go to or what that she wants to go.
Sure.
You know, present the process.
Yeah, we could do that on the ninth.
It'd be fascinating. I would, yeah.
I don't know if she's available or not.
We got a full schedule for you on the ninth.
Yeah, okay, alright, another time.
Another time, I'm sure she'd be very happy. She's in seed collection time, so.
It's probably her busy time.
Yeah, yeah, but I've seen that facility where they sort them out and, and yeah, they dry them.
It's a seed separator, that machine.
Too, yeah, I have to meet Lori Ryan, she's quite the asset for.
Oh, sure, sure.
Uh, the other piece on the nutrient, uh, presentation that you had last week, great that you approved the seed name, and I did share following the meeting, but just want to make sure too. So that, that connection and partnership occurred, and it's all about relationship building. But former Illinois state representative, Mike Tryon, who was in the business, he is the one that made the connections to kind of say, hey, here's an opportunity. I want to see very much as always stewarding the district and helping to ensure that, um, that we see those benefits come back in the areas. And so that was a, a great connection.
Alright, good stuff, yes. Anyone else have anything to say before we entertain a adjournment?
We saw a turkey vulture on our property. I've never seen one before, I'm like, they are big.
Alright, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? The move?
Second.
Second of Heather?
Facy Leegy?
Yes.
President Zimmerman?
Yes.
Facy Brady? Yeah, Vice President Wazore?
Yes.
Secretary Zeller?
Yes.
And President Everard?
Yes. And reach your seats. There are adjournments.